Beth Lakin, Polly Proler, and Michelle Montecue. Right here, we can stand right here by the flag. Just gonna stand there with your chair.
That's John's chair.
I need you to raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Polly Lakin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of town councillor.
Of town councillor.
Upon which.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, everyone. All right. So are we ready for me to call the meeting to order?
We gotta sign this.
We have to sign.
Can I let that sign real quick, John?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Big sharpie.
Yes. Yes.
Most of the people don't need a pen. It's changed. I have a pencil.
All right, John, I think we're ready.
Okay. So I will call this Ridgeway Workforce Housing, Workforce and Affordable Housing Committee Meeting to Order Wednesday, April 9th, 2025, and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Polly Proler here. Kevin Gramley.
Here.
Beth Lakin.
Here.
Michelle Montecue.
Here.
Terry Skyler.
Here.
Joseph Scoville.
Here.
John Clark.
Here. All right, we have two public hearings and Preston, I'll let you carry it away.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Jim with Impact Development Services. Jim, thanks for being here.
Yes, of course. Can you guys all hear me? Okay, before I begin?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am here today, so the exception request has been moved down to just one. I'll explain that here in just a second, but we are here for the consideration of an exception request to add a non-permitted capital improvement. To a little bit of background on that. Let me start with the background before the introduction. That just makes a little bit more sense. Rural Homes in early 2025 had sent out an email soliciting homeowners if they had done some improvements to the Ridgeway, their Ridgeway, their own owned homes to submit an exception request to see if those can get added as a permitted capital improvement. The main benefit of permitted capital improvements outside of the, of course, the benefit to the homeowner as they're occupying their property is that it can add to the value of the home at time of sale to the maximum sales price up to a total of 10% of the original purchase price. The guidelines state that to be considered a permitted capital improvement, it must be submitted for consideration of a permitted capital improvement to the housing authority prior to construction or erection of said capital improvement. This is the reason for the exception that is being brought forth today. Of Rural Homes sent an email to all the current homeowners of the homeowners three provided exception requests. I went through those and the ones that were for non-luxury items and that had receipts to verify the total costs is the ones that I brought to you today. There was another homeowner, Kristy Sabo, who as of today decided to withdraw her exception request. So we're only here to hear one for today from Nancy Madsen. Any questions before I go into Nancy's specific request about permitted capital improvements? What they are? We've had a similar exception request late last year. Silence is golden. Okay, I'll can carry on. So Nancy submitted improvements for four different things, a storage shed, the shed foundation, the fence installation for her yard and a vanity cabinet. All receipts are on file. And so she has submitted her permitted capital improvement for that. I submitted in the packet her exception request application, seeing as how it fits to the exception criteria and how it has long lasting benefits to the home and to future owners. So that is her capital improvement. My, the staff recommendation from Impact Development Services is to deny this exception because a similar exception of this nature for a capital improvement was denied in not August. It was submitted in August, but the hearing was in September 2024 for a previous owner. And approving such would set a precedence that we would have to approve these kinds of exceptions in the future and bypass the guideline procedure. The exception review criteria that we've gone over before in the past is there. And you can go through those and see if you, if you wish to approve what this exception would satisfy. And then our next steps would be to, for motions for consideration would be to approve and or deny. And then, of course, talk amongst yourself, asks me any questions. I believe the owner in question, Nancy Madsen, is, she had the link. I'm not sure if she's here today in person in the room. I can't see the audience members, but I'm not sure if she's here to answer any questions, but I will answer any to the best of my ability if you have them.
Nancy does not appear to be on at this point.
Okay.
So you know. All right, anybody on council have questions to start out for Jim?
I have a question. Would these improvements had have been approved if she had applied before she did them? I wasn't clear on that from reading it, and maybe I just missed something.
Sure, yeah, if it had gone the standard procedure, I wouldn't even have to come to the housing committee. It would be, I would be able to approve as a housing administrator. I would have approved those for sure.
All of them would have been approved. They're all acceptable, except that she didn't get approval ahead of time.
Prior to the installation and or construction. Yes, correct.
I actually have an additional question on that.
Sure.
Storage sheds that are amounting to $350 aren't super permanent. So when someone goes to sell, is that part of what IDS does is make sure those improvements that were made and capitalized still on the property when they're sold?
Yeah, that's a great, yeah, that's a great question. We have never run into that. But yeah, if it was approved, we definitely would want to make sure that when we were going through the maximum sales price, we would want to confirm that that would be part of contingent with the sale, that the shed was still there. With the capital improvements, they also depreciate over time based on the Marshall Swift Residential Handbook depreciation tables. So it depends on how long. I mean, with that three, it doesn't add a great value for a $320 shed anyways to the overall maximum sales price. So depreciation based on the quality of materials. But yes, we would verify that that shed was still there and was part of the sale.
I just know, we all know what plastic does in Ridgway.
It seems like maybe.
Within five years might not be.
Maybe the fence would be the one.
That was, yeah, and I, so do we have a a text of this email that Rural Homes sent out? Because I worry that we just invited people to basically come forward with exceptions and things that were done without being permitted. And now we're, the staff recommendation is to deny, but that's a pretty rough process. Please tell us what you did, but we're still not being approved.
Yeah, so I wasn't on that original email that Rural Homes sent out. The email that they sent, at least what was communicated to me after the fact. I had the emails in this thread. I would have to, I believe it's around page 30, but let me find what page that's on.
All right.
Lots of pictures to go through. Definitely not page 30. It is. From the packet from the agenda, it's page 50. The bottom of page 50 is where it begins. So yes, it was, the exception requests were solicited. Rural Homes outlined the correct procedure, but also said that many homeowners had raised concerns that they had made, had made improvements. And so Rural Homes advised them all to submit exceptions.
So would this be the only exceptions before you started? These will be the only exceptions we'll see before you started managing it and people were alerted to how this needs to be done?
No, this has been in the guidelines since the, all the homeowners closed on the property. So it's something that they should have been aware of as homeowners, as responsible homeowners. So yeah, this is nothing new. This has been, since we've administrated these, since the lottery, since the homes closed, we've administrated these from the beginning. This is not new information.
I would be in favor of approving the fans, but maybe not the other items.
This has happened before.
I actually went back and pulled up the one that we denied back in September. Yeah, it was the shed and paint and an EV charger.
I'm sorry, what?
Shed, an EV charger and paint. I was pretty comfortable pointing at the painting as luxury, like you were making an upgrade to your, your paint. It was newly painted. Yeah. I actually feel really, really stuck based on this email that Rural Homes sent. Because we denied this other request.
That's worrying. Since we've already denied the request previously, a request.
But you didn't have the information about this Rural Homes email at that time?
Well, the Rural Homes email actually should have no bearing on this.
Okay.
Because it's not town, it's not the workforce housing. IDS is the administrator who is answerable to town for administering this. Our job is to approve exceptions. So I am, I, the way I feel is we're now in a place between a organization that doesn't actually have any say so over this at this point, came and said, please ask for an exception and this body that has denied exceptions exactly the same in the past. And so that's, that's a really uncomfortable position to.
For an item, the last one was shed, which again, you stated, if they're not expensive sheds, they're not going to hold up.
But the EV charger is something I absolutely would have approved on the last one.
I have, I have a hard time with, you know, people wanting to improve their homes, improve the space in which they live. And on one hand, I absolutely want people to be able to get a little bit more money for the house if and when they sell. However, we already set a precedent and I don't, I don't know what a good answer is here. Just.
Yeah, this is a tough one, isn't it?
Yeah. I was really hoping one of you guys would have some great insight on this because I got, I honestly, I guess the answer is we might have to deny this. Like based on holding that line. I think the there is the slight possibility of viewing and is mitigating that they were invited to do it before sale. I think one of the compounding factors last time was, oh, wait, I'm doing it right as I'm selling. But it's still a really, really fuzzy line.
Yeah, I guess one thing I'm thinking is there, is there any way to, in order to avoid the precedent, deny the request, but then ask for some edits to the process so that there's a way to do it in the future?
Yeah, you can always amend the guidelines if you no longer want the capital improvements to be submitted prior to construction erection. They can be submitted at any time as long as there's receipts to show proof. Yeah. That could definitely be amended.
No, I think they should be done prior.
Yeah, I the only way I would be okay with that is less than some dollar amount. But that still feels like an exercise for disappointment, right? If you're gonna make an improvement and you want it to be capitalized, you need to ask in the process.
No, I think the process is good.
So it sounds like, well, go ahead.
Capital improvements are capped out at 10% of the original purchase price. So they can't get egregious, but I mean, that's still quite a bit of money. Yes.
Okay, what are we thinking?
Unfortunately, I think we have to deny it.
I'm in agreement with Beth.
Which is not to say that I don't want people to make improvements to their property, but please come to us. I am happy to approve improvements to your property.
Right, it's hard not to approve the fence improvement, but it is hard to already set the precedent.
I guess I'm always curious about how much of a precedent something like that is.
Well, unfortunately, John, if here, if we approve this one and didn't approve the last one, that actually brings us into the question of how did we make a different determination?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. But it's still. Well, somebody want to make a motion?
I move to deny the exception request for capitalizing improvements.
Second.
Okay, motion by Beth, seconded by Kevin, I think it was. We'll need a roll call vote, please.
I, Michelle Montecue.
No.
Skyler.
Abstained.
Josie Scoville.
Hi.
John Clark.
So I vote on these because this is not the council, right?
Correct, sure.
I'm gonna vote aye. So that passed what? Four, five, one?
Five votes had passed.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Yep, that's all I've got for today. Thanks for your time. You guys have a lovely night.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay.
Alrighty, thanks, everybody. So with that, we will close the Workforce and Affordable Housing Committee meeting. And I will let's see, I will open call the regular town council meeting of April 9th, 2025 to order and again ask for the clerk to call the roll.
Council Scrambling.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Lakin.
Here.
Montecue.
Yeah.
Skyler.
Here.
Scoville.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. All right, that brings us to additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any?
Yeah, Mayor, I have one.
Okay.
I do not.
So if we could please add an action item directly after the consent calendar for the appointment of a temporary mayor pro temp for this meeting only. Obviously, Mayor Clark is attending remotely. In the event that there's connectivity issues, we'll need to have someone ready to chair the meeting. So we will take on the appointment of the longer term mayor pro temp towards the end of the meeting. So again, this would simply be for the appointment of a temporary mayor pro temp for the remainder of this meeting. Hope that makes sense.
Thanks, Preston. I'm not sure that's needed. I, I did check before I got on and that signal seems really strong, but probably a good, good one just in case. So thanks for that. Anything else? Additions, deletions?
No, sir.
All right, is there anything on the consent calendar anybody wants to pull off or is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Who was that that made the motion? Polly?
Polly.
And Kevin seconded, I believe. So
Yes, it was Terry. It was Terry.
Oh, sorry, Terry. Sorry, I'll stop trying to name who's making motions and seconding. We need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Grambling.
Hi.
Kroger.
I.
Lakin.
I.
Montecue.
I need to recuse myself because I can't approve the minutes I wasn't here.
Okay.
That's fine. Anybody else? Yeah.
Scoville.
Hi.
Okay, that passes with one abstention, I believe. That takes us to the temporary mayor pro temp position. How do we want to do this, Preston?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So I, I just came up explaining what was needed. So we can start with nominations or for simplicity's sake, one of you could just make a motion to appoint someone as temporary mayor pro temp. Once a motion is made, the normal meeting protocol applies.
I move to nominate Beth Lakin as mayor for 10 for this meeting.
I second that.
All right, motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Scrambling.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Lakin.
I.
Montecue.
Hi.
Skyler.
Hi.
Scoville.
Hi.
All right.
I'm, I'm having to accept this. I do want to raise the question of if the mayor is gone, whether it's John or anyone in the future, it is really difficult to lead the meeting from afar. And I would like to slightly consider mayor pro temp in the future. That decision doesn't have to be made tonight, but the second situation that we just had points to the beauty of having a person in the room. So I'm not saying I need to do it tonight. I'm just something to ponder.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point. I've definitely thought about that on a rare occasion. I think this is the only time I've been remote for a council meeting, but yeah, it's, it's not a bad idea. I, I think we probably, as you say, probably can't necessarily do it tonight, but just maybe direct staff to look at a, I, I don't know, Preston, that's not gonna like require a charter amendment or anything silly like that, would it?
We're nominating a pro temp tonight, later tonight. I understand.
No, 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 I'm saying in the future, if the mayor is not present in the room, it would be nice to have the mayor pro temp run the meeting, even if the mayor is present online, just for simplicity's sake.
It, it does make it a little cleaner. Preston, does that require anything special?
I play the journey on TV, but I have to answer that question. I, I mean, I think it's as simple as if you felt like you didn't want to run the meeting from afar. If that's the desire, you could defer to the mayor pro temp.
Yeah, do it informally. That's a good idea.
Oh, what do you think?
Yeah, I would concur with that, that the mayor can, I would suggest that it be ironed out ahead of time logistically, but the mayor could appoint the mayor pro temp to conduct the meeting. And then the voting rules would still apply.
That makes sense to me. I mean, I, what do you guys think? Do you want to do that tonight? I mean, I'm, I'm open.
I don't think we need to, John. I just, given that that came up, I, it's something that I've seen meetings run and wanted to bring up, and it just seemed like the right time.
That's good. Okay. Um. All right, that takes us to public comments. Time established on the agenda to address council regarding any item that's not otherwise listed on the agenda. Anyone in the room or on Zoom want to make a public comment? Any in the room? All right, we'll move on from public comment to public requests and presentations. The first one is item number six, update on the home trust of Erie County's Parkside Townhomes. And is Andrew in the room?
Yes.
He's here.
Okay, go for it.
Thanks, everyone. It's nice to see you all. I'm very excited to say that we are done with the duplex. We have our, well, we have our temporary CO. We have some landscaping complete, which we're then doing this weekend and this coming week. And then it should be ready to go. So I will run you through just a slideshow. Happy to take questions. I have some documents that I can pull more details if you guys want details, things like that. But I just wanted to be really transparent and share with you guys kind of the outcome of this project. We're really proud of the outcome of the project, so. So this was originally meant to be for 120% AMI below. With the home buyers that were selected, we are at 105 and below. So we did end up with a little bit higher, lower AMIs. The duplex overall is 3,716 square feet with 15, over 1,500 in living space. Each unit gets its own one car garage. There are three bedrooms in the, in the top floor, two full bedrooms as well, and then a powder room on the ground floor. And then the ground floor is an open floor.
Just for the record, it's 3,716.
What did I say?
30.
Thank you. And this is the floor plan of the ground floor. As you can see, open floor plan, stairs going up. The second floor has the three bedrooms, the tuba baths, and then each one has a laundry room there in the front corner. We will have a celebration for the duplex on Thursday at 5:30. You are invited. If you'd like to see it in person, give them a little tour. The general contractor will be there to also answer more in-depth questions in terms of construction.
Next Thursday, correct?
Not tomorrow, but maybe yes.
When we, I just wanted to make sure. One of those really wide lines that look like a bookshelf or something.
Not how. Oh, those are distances, measurements.
Oh. Okay.
She was actually looking at the closet space. Yeah. Denoting hangers.
Hangers.
Thanks. Oh, they're hangers. Thank you.
Oh, okay. I thought you were going to do that.
The car wash.
Yeah.
So if we were to do this at market rate, it would have cost a little over 1 million and $293 per square foot. Per person market rate, we were able to get to 213. But our cost that we are passing on to the home buyers is $177 per square foot. It came in well, under budget. And I will, the, the next, I think it's the next slide we'll show. And I just wanted to point out, I really wanted to share this, the, the previous slide because it showed our, two of our original board members and one who was very involved in some of the donations for the duplex and then a supporter of ours. So I think they will be happy to know that this project.
Back to the obvious, what difference in price to two units?
What's that?
Why is there a difference in price to two units?
The difference in price is construction interest. So the one is closing on April 30th and the other is closing on May 21st. So they are carrying an extra mile's worth of construction interest.
Very good.
Thank you. It cost me more than $20, I called them a lot of favors. Your square footage cost I was saying is incredible.
Thanks. So the way we got there is all of the folks that were involved in bringing the cost down. So New Vista Federal Credit Union in Montrose gave us a construction loan for 647,000. The land was donated by Patrick and Marty O'Leary. We received a grant from DOLA from the Division of Housing for $100,000. The general contractor and subcontractors either well, I should say, they donated a portion of their labor to the project resulting in $52,000 in savings. And then we had local donations totaling 46,000, cash donations totaling 46,000. And then we had our local organizations, SMPA and Rock donate a little over 3,000. And these subcontractors, I just want to call out, they were the ones that donated to the project because it was an affordable housing project, reducing their costs by different amounts. reducing their costs by different amounts, but Safeway, excavation, Kings Concrete, SNPs, Wild Country, Potential Power Systems, Pro Services in the gutter, Montrose Garage Doors, Energy Pro Insulation, Grand Mark Drywall, and Craft Painting, as well as the Grand Kubah Planestas with Onsite Construction. So he reduced his management fee for this project because it was affordable housing. And just did a really stellar job at staying lower budget. And it took 15 months to complete, but I would say well worth the wait. And then Clint made sure that this project is all electric, really well insulated. The walls are 30 and the roof are 50. The wall assembly, he's got a cool system with the house wrap to prevent condensation and mold. And then the windows are double pane low E factor of 0.27. And then, yeah, we just have a few pictures from groundbreaking through construction into completion. And like I said, we're looking at completing the landscaping and then we'll have the CO and the duplex celebration ceremony next Thursday. We had a selection process. You guys are familiar with these. Kelly Gooden, our community outreach director, created the home trust home buyer selection program. We base it off of other CLT's, Elevation Community Land Trust, and Chuky Housing Trust. They have selection programs as well. And and then we also got some really good input from Habitat for Humanity, San Lons, and Montrose. So they were all really helpful in the selection program. We had a a partnership with Housing Resources in Montrose to conduct the income and asset verification. They were really key to that part of the process. And then we had a home buyer selection committee that helped us make the final determination of which home buyers to choose. We have five applicants that all very well could have taken these units. And unfortunately, we had to choose two. So but the two that were chosen then are quite happy. So we're happy to announce the home buyers, Lori and Brian Patton. They have two kids, Hunter and Sue, and Sarah Burr. She's a teacher in Ridgway, and her two kids. So those were the ones that were selected for the two units. And this is just a great big thank you to all of those involved. I listed the funding partners, but we also want to thank the town of Ridgway, the Ridgway Landing Commission, TJ Dubler. Process was really smooth and he was very helpful. We want to thank individually the foundations that contributed to the project, Beanstalk Foundation, Drew Kenneth King, Telly Wright Foundation, Western Colorado Community Foundation, Yoray County Community Foundation, Impact Development Fund provided the architectural plans for about $1,300. Habitat for Humanity, as I mentioned, helped us with the home buyer selection process. And then our design team, Black Kingdom Engineering, Buckhorn, Julie Warrenton, she did the landscape plans. They all either reduced their costs or completely donated to the projects. So it was also how our price point got down to $177 per square foot. So.
One big one missing, the own trust. What a great.
Yeah. Yeah.
So. The owners must be really stoked.
We are, we are. We're really glad to finally complete our first project. We're already gearing up for the second one, hoping to break ground in August.
Just a bar for yada.
Yeah. Yeah. But we're trying to, you know, get some, some more housing up and going. The, the next two projects this summer, the one is contingent on a $3 million grant, or well, it's called Equity from Chappa. But those two will be in your ray, and those are both going to be affordable rentals. So do you guys have any questions or anything that I can?
They're beautiful units on the outside. Congratulations.
Nice work. Thanks.
I have no questions. Just thank you so much for doing all this. I know it's not been an easy path, and especially with Patrick unfortunately leaving us.
Yeah.
But I'm so, so grateful for you guys and all the hard work that you've done. Thank you.
You'd definitely be proud.
He would be proud.
You're here. Thanks, Andrea.
Yeah.
Great work. Any other questions in the audience or on Zoom? Thanks for presenting.
Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you, guys.
All righty, that takes us to item number seven, request to block South Lena Street after entrance to Mountain Market to Hyde Street intersection on June 14th from 12 to four for the 40th anniversary party of Ridgway Hardware. Is Stephen in the room or is somebody else taking this?
He's coming.
There he is.
Hello, everybody. Yeah. I believe we are the oldest established retail store in Ridgway, so I believe this is not just something to celebrate our business, but to celebrate the strength of business has in this community and it can thrive and survive. I think that's something that this town needs right now, considering that businesses are struggling in here. So I think you can say good thing all around. And that's pretty much it. I don't, I don't have to say. I take out all your time.
Yeah, so I'm not, that's, I could just jump in. The request is to block South Lena Street from just south of the entry to Mountain Market to Hyde Street intersection from 12 to four on Saturday, June 14th. And Stephen's going to put a stage, are you going to put a stage? Stage and have a band on there that's going to face to the north.
Yes, to the north. So the sound will be going towards.
Sounds awesome.
Free hot dogs, free beer, free wine. Live music. Lots of giveaways, giving away grills, giving away all sorts of particles, all sorts of stuff.
I do just have a general question. Curious why you chose, why you're thinking Lena Street and not the kind of the cross street, the east west street on the south side in between you and Bellevito seems a little less of a.
We would like to do it right in front of the store just because it'll bring attention more to the store. If it's off to the side, I mean, if that's all y'all will agree to, sure. But I would, I would like it to be right in front of the store to again, more focused towards the store. We'll be doing stuff off the patio up front, possibly in the top too. So it would allow me to all areas.
Plenty of routes around. So yeah, just curious.
I think it's only a block out of the, out of the way for anyone. So.
Yeah. Shane, do you see any issues with that at all?
The only thing I would say is that you know, trying to access the market and then use Lena Street to go, some kind of location.
No, we plan on arguing after the entryway. So we'll still be able to get into the market.
It's still going to pose a problem with people trying to go to Avenue Street. So we'll get something out.
Yeah. Sure.
My only question as, as is usually my question, do you have a bathroom idea?
We have a bathroom.
Done.
I couldn't hear Shane's, Shane's concern and whether it was addressed.
He basically was wanting Lena Street to be marked in advance to make sure that people trying to go to the market are aware that they can't use Lena and.
From the south.
Yep. And there will be signs.
Okay, makes sense. Any other comments, questions?
I can address Terry's question. Because of the fact that nothing's being sold, then there's no need for a special event, but a license.
I will have this person serving alcohol will have a license to serve alcohol. So we will add all that to to be able to recognize if somebody needs to be cut off or check ID, stuff like that.
And I'm sure you'll, somebody's told you, you got to have signage around the perimeter of where you're doing the event that says no alcohol beyond this point.
We can do that, definitely.
Yeah.
I make a motion to grant the request to block South Lena Street after the entrance to Mountain Market to Hyde Street intersection on June 14th, 2025, from noon to four for the 40th anniversary party of the Ridgway Hardware Store.
Second.
All right, motion made, seconded. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Scrabble.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Bacon.
I'm.
Montague.
Hi.
Skylar.
Hi.
Scoville.
Hi.
All right, there you go, Stephen.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Okay, that takes us to number eight, quarterly update from the Ridgway Sustainability Advisory Board. Who's taking that one? Terry?
Nope, Dave Jim is the chairman.
Hey, John.
Hi, Dan.
This is our first quarterly update for the Sustainability Advisory Board. And you can see, we have six members currently with Terry is our ex officio and Preston is our
staff rep.
Staff representative. And next slide. We have 12 annual goals this year, and I'm going to update you on six of those. Next slide. The fifth of our goals was to have two educational outreach events this year. The first will be a Decker Room Resilience Hub dedication. Sometime in summer, Terry's thinking June or July, we'll see. That was recently came out in the news. It's live. It's great. We had the microgrid and the battery backup, but we will have an event with probably other electrification information and other similar messages this summer. And we also will have another EV ride and drive Saturday, 9th of August, which we will hopefully expand into more of an electrification and EV event. So we'll have events in this room with teaching people a little about electric power tools and heat pumps and other all things electric. So I also have a revamped town sustainability website. Next slide. So if you, if you go out to the town website now in the right, upper right corner, you see sustainability. And if you click on that next slide, you see a reformatting Richway Sustainability Website LinkedIn, thanks to Dave K. Meyer and and Sheridan. Thank, and they did a tremendous job here. So please look it up. Next slide. Our six and seventh items are, one, it's time to update the Ridgway building codes. They were last updated in 2019, and we generally do that every six years. And for almost two years now, Colorado law has required that any municipality that updates their business codes include electric and solar ready code language. So that will be a requirement as we update our, our code this year. We are part of a regional consortium that's working toward adoption of the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code with that electric and solar ready code. There's also a Colorado Low Energy and Carbon Code that will be a upcoming requirement, and that will be coming out in the next month. So that will, we'll look at including that and considering other potential code amendments. And from the Sustainability Advisory Board, our committee strongly recommends that as part of our building code revision that we specify a date for all new construction originally to be all electric. It's clearly very possible to do that now as Andrea demonstrated, and my kids next door to that have an all electric home. There are lots of new all electric homes going in. We have the technology and we need to go that direction. So I hope we can get, get that accomplished. Our number one on our list for the year was adoption of a town resolution formally establishing a net zero goal by 2030. We think this is really important for the town to kind of put our mouth where, you know, we, we, we've been saying this, that we need to do this, and now it's a time to do it. This resolution will establish a goal to electrify all town buildings, all the utilities, get rid of gas powered equipment, including maintenance equipment and vehicles by 2030, if it's feasible. That'll, so it'll impact the decisions the town makes when replacing these appliances, equipment, and vehicle. It will ensure that our town supported buildings are all electric, and it will help raise public consciousness and hopefully spur other town residences, businesses. Next slide. So that zero resolution formally supports what the town council has said before in the town of Ridgway Master Plan, encouraging the use of carbon free renewable energy systems. It supports the state of Colorado goal passed also in 2019. And it supports our regional climate action plan that we have agreed to follow. Next slide. So what this next zero commitment will mean, the town will continue to buy SMPA's carbon free energy. If town carbon fueled equipment needs replacement, electric options will first be considered and selective and reasonable. The town will identify current town owned vehicles, appliances, maintenance equipment that are powered by fossil fuels and will come up with a replacement schedule where reasonable and feasible to buy electric vehicles, appliances, and maintenance equipment. And future buildings that receive town funding will be all electric and net zero. And we will encourage Ridgway residents to follow our lead. Excellent. So one of the commitments that we made was coming up with a Ridgway roadmap. There are actually three slides. I'm not going to show you all that and get into the details, but we are working on you know, once we make the commitment to, to go net zero, then we need to do an inventory, see where we're using gas and what it would take to replace it. You know, come up with the schedule, come up with the costs. And then we will come back to the town council with proposals and, you know, this fall, when we look at the funding cycle, we'll see what makes sense. Excellent. Questions?
Who's got questions?
Some good presentation.
Yeah, thank you. This is, this is really a, a good opening to know what the Sustainability Advisory Board is looking at and those are the tech recommendations that we need for your groups. So thank you so much.
Your website is incredibly informative.
It is. Kudos, great. Thanks to these two. Thank you.
Backseat. All the links, the hot links, it's very informative. So that's awesome.
So Dave, Dave, and with the modest, a lot of information is already there on the website you created, so it's repackaged.
They took what I did and jumped way off my shoulders. Yeah. Yeah, thank.
Very impressive. Thank you.
So yeah, thank you, and on to the next resolution.
Is there anybody in the room or on Zoom has questions? None? All right, thanks, Dave, and thanks to the whole Sustainability Advisory Board. Great work.
Thanks, Dan.
Forge ahead. All right, that takes us to Policy Matters. Number nine is Resolution Number 25-06, Reaffirming Ridgway's Commitment to Climate Action, Establishing a Goal for Net Zero Carbon Emissions and Establishing an All-Electric Net Zero Energy Use Policy for Housing Projects with Financial Investment from the Town of Ridgway. This is obviously following up on the previous item. Preston?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This, yeah, you're right. It piggybacks on the SAV's presentation. And you'll remember from the slideshow, the very first goal listed in the SAV's work plan items for or from the 2025 Strategic Plan is to advise the town to adopt a resolution formally establishing a net zero goal to be achieved by 2030. And so after a number of discussions through most of last year, I shouldn't say most, but you know, through a good portion of 2024 and the first few months of 2025, the resolution before you was created, and if adopted as written, it would do several things that I'm gonna kind of read through them. I know you see that in the resolution there, but number one, it would pledge to address climate change, pledge the town, excuse me, as an organization, to address climate change at the speed and scale that it demands by committing to achieve net zero carbon emissions for all municipal operations by 2030. It would pledge the town to collaborate with other community leaders, residents, and stakeholders to build our collective capacity, scaling the right solutions that grow our local economies, protect public health, and create a sustainable carbon-free future for all. It would commit the SAV to develop for Town Council Consideration and Approval a Net Zero Carbon Emission Roadmap, which you just saw an excerpt of a draft that David K. Meyer put together and unveiled at one of the recent SAV meetings. So shout out to him for implementation based on annual appropriation by the Town Council. It would make a commitment that housing projects that receive financial investment from the Town of Ridgway, including but not limited to tax and fee waivers, shall be all-electric and shall not include natural gas service or any appliances or equipment which use natural gas. It would make a commitment that housing projects that receive financial investment from the town, including but not limited to tax and fee waivers, shall, did I just read that right? No. Shall achieve net zero energy use, which is preferred to be achieved onsite to the extent economically practicable and may be achieved by enrolling in SMPA's Totally Green Program for 100% renewable sources. And then lastly, by pledging to achieve net zero carbon emissions by 2030, the town would serve as an example for residents and businesses to achieve a similar goal. The town will explore mechanisms, of course, and potential incentives to enable town residents and businesses in this pursuit. Thanks for indulging me. I just thought it was very important to read through all that, especially to, you know, underscore all the great conversations that have been taking place at SAV meetings over the last long time. So I hope all that makes sense. Happy to answer your questions, and we have the majority of SAV members here, too.
Thanks, Preston. That's great. Anybody have questions?
I don't know. I guess I'm nervous about saying that they cannot have natural gas as an option. I don't know if I agree with this.
I'm gonna let counsel weigh in, and then I'll call on you, Jake. Anybody else on council have comments, questions?
I think we have been talking about sustainability in Ridgway for a really long time. And if you look at our master plan, it's pretty clear that it is our charge to make sure Ridgway is moving things in the appropriate direction, using natural gas as a fossil fuel. If we never put an end to using natural gas as a heat source in our homes here in Ridgway, we are perpetuating that cycle on the lifecycle of homes.
Yeah, and I would, I would just weigh in on the other front. A lot of, there's been a lot of controversy, a lot of debate about not allowing net gas ranges, gas cooktops. I just recently bought an induction cooktop, just a one burner for the camper van that we're in right now. It's amazing. It is absolutely amazing. It heats so quickly. It cools down quickly. It's, it's the future. It really is. So Josie, I understand your concerns. I empathize with the blowback we might get, but I agree with Beth that I think it's the right thing to do at this point. If there is any other comment.
Couple of things. The use of natural gas for cooking, and I have that, and I enjoy cooking on a flame, but I wouldn't do it again. There's also a health issue in the home with carbon dioxide. There's other communities around the nation that are doing this, not for the reasons we are, which is for fire safety. Natural gas is a significant fire danger. Exploding gas lines of the houses that explode like the one you saw in the news the other day. Thirdly, going all-electric is the primary means based on today's technology to achieve a net zero outcome for a home, because you can offset all of your energy use through your electric consumption and consuming fossil-free fuel, fossil fuel-free electricity. So it's the most practical means to achieve a net zero home or net zero, those things to go on.
It's also very, there is a access fee for natural gas. And so if you are a homeowner yourself who built just before the push, the big push for full electrification, jumping on to putting solar in your house becomes really difficult because your payoff period, and I ran the numbers, for my house, it was like 40 years. Because with the gas furnace and a gas hot water heater and a gas stove, your electric consumption just isn't that big. And so when we start thinking about people wanting to affordably make jumps towards a net zero, putting a barrier in where now things have to be shifted out to make your solar make more sense. You need to switch your, I mean, so essentially, I'm looking at it going, well, until the furnace fails. When the furnace fails, I'll replace it with a heat pump. Or when the hot water heater goes out, I'll have it rewired to be electric. But it is, it's really hard to preemptively make those changes for big-ticket items. It's actually a relatively small and in today's world, almost vanishing cost. You're not running a line. I think we can actually fairly comfortably say that going all-electric isn't making your house more expensive, whereas five, 10 years ago, it was still a matter of, does that pencil out?
And to that, to that last point, the SAV is going to be working on educational outreach materials, and we'll go through and explore the economic benefits of going all-electric versus combination of gas and electric. So there will be a lot of educational materials that aren't completed yet that will be presented. For example, the ribbon cutting from the decker, we're gonna have an SAV, it's a big educational outreach campaign, which will be part of educating not only the consumers, but also the architects, the builders, some of the vendors, that this is the way we're going. As a, as a subtle reminder, or just as a reminder, the Wetterhorn, the Housing Trust projects, all of the recent developments have on their own gone all-electric because they thought it was cost-effective. So this is not going to be terribly objectionable to the building community. It's already happening naturally anyway.
I think the technology has come a long way in a short period of time, and what might be helpful for the education is to have some of the people that have electric heat speak to it, speak to how efficient it is, because I like that built not that long ago, but didn't realize that you could do that efficient electric heat. I still was picturing like electric baseboard heating that we had in homes, you know, that was, you were freezing, or else the bill was extremely expensive. So I think it's really important to get that information out there and have some testimonials from people like, what, how, is it, does it keep your home warm, and what's the cost?
And search as an air conditioner as well, so tool-purpose plants.
Which you might need more with things heating up.
Let me let Jake comment. Go ahead, Jake.
Hi, yeah, I wanted to just actually comment on the text of the resolution itself. It sounds like there might be a potential loophole there with specifically calling out natural gas. Someone could potentially install propane and get around that. So maybe consider focusing on using fossil fuel gases, or if you want to call out specific fuels, include propane in that so that there isn't a potential loophole. And I'll add that I have an all-electric home, and the Home Trust duplex is all-electric, and the Wetterhorn homes are also all-electric. So we have a number of people who can speak to their experiences with it.
Yeah, that's just what Terry was saying. Thanks for that heads up, Jake, on the propane versus natural gas. I think that's a good one. We could probably just, if there's a motion to approve, we could direct staff to make the necessary edits. Or unless Bo or Preston, you think we need to edit and come back? I don't know.
No, I don't, sorry. I don't think that we need to make an edit. I guess, again, I want to make it clear that this is not a code amendment to the building code. This is.
Oh, gotcha. It's a resolution. Gotcha.
Right. That is, is in support of not the use of natural gas for town projects that have town funding. So and I think it's importantly highlighted by the board that this is a step, as is in line with the prior presentation, but this is not a code amendment.
I have a weird question. Is it actually in town, can someone build a house and have a propane tank installed per current code?
Probably.
I've actually just never thought about it.
Because gas is available. So, so I.
I don't, real quick, I don't, you don't know the answer. We can, we can find out, but.
Which case, probably.
I, I, Jake's concerned. I have the same concern and was gonna offer that same suggestion. And it could be that we identify any source of fossil fuel for, for energy appliances, because you in the town syllabus, and they still use heating oil and coal, which are both fossil fuels as well, not just propane. So we just, we can make the appropriate, you know, language change.
I think it would just say not include natural gas service or other fossil fuel sources. Yeah.
We'll come up with a way.
Is there any other comments or questions either there in the room or on Zoom? Hearing none, is there more discussion on council or somebody want to make a motion?
Move to approve Resolution Number 25-06, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Ridgway, Colorado, reaffirming Ridgway's commitment to climate action, establishing a goal for net zero carbon emissions and establishing an all-electric net zero energy use policy for housing projects with financial investment from the Town of Ridgway.
Which.
With the caveat of having staff look at the language to prevent loopholes via natural gas and fossil fuels. Second?
All right, motion made by, probably seconded by Terry. Roll call vote, please.
The second was by Beth.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Councilmembers Graham, Lee.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Montague.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Scoville.
Nate.
Okay. Passes five to one. That takes us to item number 10, Request for Authorization for Myself to Sign a Letter of Support for the Town's Application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Housing Planning Grant Program to Support the Housing Needs Assessment Project. Is Angie there on this one?
Yes, I am. Hello.
Hi, Angie.
Hi. So DOLA has released some new funding, an opportunity for funding for the housing needs assessments and housing action plans to be compliant with Senate Bill 24-174. It contains specific guidelines for the assessments. So we'll be using a consultant for our housing needs assessment. We've already released an RFP, and we've allocated some money toward the housing needs assessment for 2025. But the grant would also include the action plan. So. Great. Any questions? Okay. And we did get a letter of support from your accounting.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angie. Go ahead.
I move to approve signing of the Letter of Support for that housing funding grant program. Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Graham, Lee.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Montague.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Scoville.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. It takes us to a couple of public hearings. First one is item number 11, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 01-2025, Amending Section 7-4 of the Zoning regs and Section 8 hyphen 5 Short Term Rentals of the Ridgway Municipal Code.
All right. Did you guys go out of order for me?
No.
No. It's not out of order? No. Okay.
You got it just when I hit your time.
Cool. So we went over this before during first reading. Ordinance 01-2025 establishes updates to the Town of Ridgway's Municipal Code regarding short-term rental regulations and licensing. You can go to the next slide. The updates are in Chapter 7 and Chapter 8, and I'll kind of walk through the modifications really quick. Nothing's been changed since the first reading. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. So it's been reorganized to add some clarity between the two portions of the code, discussing the same topic, Chapter 7 to Chapter 8, and 746, and we removed a reference to an old code subsection that no longer exists. And we added some cross-referencing to prompt people to look at 85 and 746N when reviewing this. We also included Downtown Service, DS. A zone was included with general commercial and historic business where multifamily structures can be used as short-term rental if they comply with the other regulations. And there's a limit on how many units in one of those multifamily homes. Next slide. This is the performance standards where some standards relating to maximum number of bedrooms and that maximum number of guests existed, but we moved those to the next chapter. They haven't been changed. And you can go to the next slide. And the next slide, thank you. Under Chapter 851, there's a distinction between room and bedroom that was added. And then next slide. Nothing here. Next slide. The title of 853 was changed to License Administration to make it distinct from 746, which is also called Supplemental Regulations. And then this is where those performance standards were moved to, again, unchanged. Excellent. Here, a note was added that kind of is a warning that if a license is revoked, that it would require a new license, but because of the cap of 50 licenses, there might not be one available at the time of application. Excellent. And then finally, under 792, General Definitions, Owner Occupied was added and defined as at least one owner of a property lives on that property as their primary residence for at least nine months out of any 12-month period. Excellent. So the Planning Commission recommended approval during their February 19th meeting in a public hearing setting, finding that the modifications meet the criteria for a text amendment. And then at the March 12th Town Council meeting, the council introduced this at first reading. Excellent. So it's now the second reading of the ordinance, and it's eligible to be adopted by title using the motion on the screen if the Town Council wishes.
Thanks, Angie.
Thanks, Angie. Anybody have questions for Angie on this? We've been through it. So I think it's pretty straightforward.
And Mayor, just a reminder, this is a public hearing.
All right, so. All right. So comments from council. Hearing none. Is there anybody in the audience wants to make a public comment? Either on Zoom or in the room there? Going once, going twice. All right. I'll close public comment. Bring it back up to council.
I'm for me. I was about to read it from there.
My bad.
That's okay. I got it. I moved to approve ordinance zero one dash two zero two five. Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Grambling.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Montague.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Scoville.
Aye.
All right. That passes unanimously. That takes us to our second public hearing of the night.
What, John?
Somebody said something in the room I didn't catch.
We're good. Angie asked me a question about the title and I told her I don't really
Right. All right. We're all good. Okay. Takes us to the next public hearing, which is item number twelve, second reading and adoption of ordinance number oh two, two thousand and twenty-five, amending chapter eleven of the Ridgeway Municipal Code concerning the sale of dogs and cats born or raised in inhumane commercial breeding facilities. Preston.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So reminder, this is another public hearing and as you all probably recall, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, regular meeting, Ms. Joyce Cohen from Durango presented information on puppy mills or factory farms. She asked the board here to consider enacting local regulations to ban the sale of dogs and cats that are raised in inhumane commercial breeding facilities. And at the conclusion of that presentation, staff got direction to prepare ordinance for your consideration and would prohibit the sale of dogs and cats that are raised in these puppy mills. The ordinance before you was prepared and presented to you all last month, March twelfth. And council approved the ordinance on first reading. So this is this is second reading of the ordinance. Happy to answer any questions. And I believe Ms. Cohen is here on Zoom.
First off, we'll see if council has any questions. Again, this is a second reading, so we've been through this before. Any last minute comments? If not, I'll open it up for public comment and let Ms. Cohen speak. Go ahead, Joyce.
Oh, um.
If you want.
I know, um, you know, I just wanted to say thank you, hopefully in advance. There's, I don't know that I need to add anything unless you guys have any questions.
Seems like a pretty straightforward one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think. Let me see if anybody else in the room or on Zoom has questions. Hearing none. I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back up for council.
I'm going to adopt a second reading ordinance number zero, two, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance in Town of Ridgeway, Colorado, amending chapter eleven of the Ridgeway Municipal Code concerning sale of dogs and cats born or raised to inhumane commercial breeding. Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? I mean, sorry, roll call vote, please.
Councilors Grambling.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Montague.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Scoville.
Aye.
All right. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Joyce.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Joyce.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Preston.
Okay, that takes us to policy matters. We've got item number thirteen, request for authorization of staff to expend budgeted funds and enter into a contract to purchase two patrol vehicles for the Ridgeway Marshals Office. Preston.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So council's asked to authorize staff to expand budgeted funds and enter into a contract to purchase two patrol vehicles, specifically a Ford F-150 Power Boost hybrid truck and a Ford F-150 Lightning EV truck. These would be for the Ridgeway Marshals Office. Shout out to Shane for putting the memo together. Thank Shane. As most of you remember, during the last budget cycle, there were funds earmarked in, in this year's budget for the purchase of these two vehicles based on the direction that we received last budget cycle specifically. And I think it was the budget retreat that mattered, but I think it was the budget retreat. Based on the long lead time the trucks were ordered a number of months ago. And both trucks will be upbided with equipment and be delivered ready for use by the Marshals Office staff, hopefully within next month, last time I checked with Shane. But that doesn't matter at this point before you use the authorization to expand budgeted funds. So hopefully that makes sense.
I just wanted to point out that you said an electric vehicle and then a hybrid vehicle, right?
That's correct.
So keeping in line with, does that, does the hybrid work towards our net zero?
So just to, just to recap real quick, Shane did a really amazing job. He and Ryan went and tested up multiple vehicles. There were some questions about chargers and our deputy marshals driving back and forth to Montrose. So the compromise that was reached was we will buy the hybrid for deputies and then Shane is going to pilot that fully electric Lightning rather so as kind of a intermediate. So we had said your next one needs to be electric, but based on that memo he brought back, we felt comfortable going forward with one full electric and one hybrid.
Well, so it's, but it's a good observation. Technically, we just approved it a goal to do this, but that, that hybrid is pretty darn close. And this has been in the works for some time. So I think this is a worthwhile exception.
Great.
And we will, we will strive to do the next vehicle as all
And it's all electric under thirty-five miles an hour.
Say that again, Josie.
And, and just a note, if she doesn't know, the hybrid is all electric under thirty-five miles an hour. So a lot of the time that that vehicle's being used, it will be used in this electric capacity.
Great. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks for the info, guys.
Awesome. I move to authorize staff to spend budgeted funds and enter into a contract with Western Slipboard for the purchase of a fully equipped Ford F-150 Power Boost hybrid truck and a fully equipped Ford F-150 Lightning EV truck at a price not to exceed one hundred and seventy-one dollars.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Another roll call vote, please.
Councilors Grambling.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Montague.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Scoville.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Happy to get some rise in these things when they show up, Shane, huh?
Yeah, just an update on the
Jamie, Jamie, please.
The hybrid truck is at the upfitter right now, should be hopefully around the twenty-third, ready to go. We had some delays with equipment. It's been an interesting project. And then the electric truck is currently sitting on a railcar in Omaha, Nebraska, scheduled to be delivered somewhere around the twenty-third. And then fitting will take about a week to two weeks. Hopefully we won't have hurdles there. And so most likely we'll have them the first of May. Dealership's ready and we're ready to get them in and start trying. And electrical, I think we have pretty good chance of making it a successful program.
Have you driven that EV, that one fifty Lightning?
Yeah.
Yeah. How are you planning on preventing yourself from speeding?
That's going to be a question. Kind of an amusing caveat to that is people tell me all the time, you know, wouldn't catch me in a pursuit. And I said, well, I can outrun you, but you may outrun the charge.
But we don't foresee, so. We're, we're excited to get, get the vehicle put into use. The charger out here will be installed in the next couple of weeks. And one of my houses is ready. We're just waiting to get it in and actually just have to plug it in.
And that old Escape is going, right?
The old Explorer.
Or Explorer, I'm sorry, not
Yeah, it's, when it's, hopefully going to make it until till we get there and then the fleet should be intact for to test this program. See how we do with the electric.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for coming on this, Jeff.
Really appreciate it.
Alrighty, that takes us to item number fourteen, review and action on water lease agreement between the Town of Ridgeway and the Hess Family Trust. Preston.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So staff was able to negotiate the water lease agreement before you between the town and Mr. Joe Hess. Mr. Hess is very he's very generously decided to lease the town for the remainder of this year. His appropriation of water from the Tidwell Ditch. It's point three, seven, five C of S. The ditch diverts its water supply from the same source as the town's Happy Hollow Ditch. This right is senior to the town's Happy Hollow Ditch Water Right. The agreement ensures that the town will not get called out at any point during the remainder of the year, even when the crops are being processed, given what we're dealing with at the Beaver Creek diversion. This is a huge win for the town. And Mr. Hess should be commended for his generosity and commitment to the Town of Ridgeway.
Thanks. I'll, I would second that comment. I would just wholeheartedly say, I don't know if Joe's in the room, but Mr. Hess deserves our heartfelt gratitude. This is just an incredibly generous thing he's doing and it's just wonderful that we have community members that are willing and able to step up when we need them to help us out in tough times like this. So it's, it's really incredible that he's doing that. So. Anybody on council have any questions about this?
No, but just another observation. Thanks to you, Preston, for putting so much of your energy and heart into this project. You're here.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody in the room or on Zoom have questions about this? Hearing none. Anybody want to make a motion?
Approve the one lease agreement dated, it was dated the first day of April, two thousand and twenty-five. Between Town Ridgeway and the Hess Family Trust, Mr. Joseph W. Hess's trustee.
He's second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Can we have another roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Grambling.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Montague.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Scoville.
Aye.
Great. Passes unanimously. I might suggest that staff have a card drawn up that we can all come in and sign to send to Mr. Hess to thank him for this very generous agreement he's entered into with the town.
That's a great idea, John. We can do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, that takes us to item number fifteen, review and action on request for Ridgeway area trails, bike, bike ride race event on Palomino Trail and camping on private property adjacent to Mountain Lodge by riders in the event. Pam, it's got your name on it.
That's, yes, I had someone come in from, that's involved with RAT regarding the race. They're just going to use a very small portion of Palomino Trail just from the lodge to the county road. Then the main conversation was about their idea of allowing people to camp on the, the property on the south side of the lodge. He didn't think there would be even close to fifty people, but I put that into the report just because he didn't really know how many people were going to want to do that. But that's what's before you right now.
Okay. Any thoughts on council?
Good to meet you.
Yeah, it's great to have people camping.
Yeah.
It's great to have another event.
It's going to be in the race.
Well, I will be happy to cheer and support, but I am not a racer girl.
Same.
And for Josie, I mean, Polly, they've got the necessary porta-potties and things like that.
I like, see, when I ask questions so many times, people start noticing. Don't worry, there's going to be a place to go potty. Don't worry. It's important.
Yes, there are going to be part. I did, I asked the question for the discussion and was told there would be porta-potties on the park.
Thank you, Pam.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions from anyone there in the room or anybody on Zoom on this item? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request from Ridgeway area trials, RAT, bike race on Palomino Trail and camping on private property adjacent to Mountain Lodge by riders in the event.
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Grambling.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Montague.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Scoville.
Aye.
Right. Another unanimous vote. Thank you. That takes us to item number sixteen, review and action on special event permit application from the Ridgeway Youth Advisory Council for a pickleball tournament, their second annual at Ridgeway Athletic Park. Preston.
Yeah, that's right, Mayor. That, that's the request. And as a reminder, towards the end of each school year, the Youth Advisory Council's task of coming up with a capstone type project, well, this year they elected to run it back and do another pickleball tournament. Partnering with the Ridgeway Pickleball Club. Proceeds being split between the pickleball club and the Dolphin House Child Advocacy Center in Montrose. I believe that's where the proceeds half the proceeds went last year. The event will be on Saturday, May thirty-first at the Athletic Park and Youth Advisory Council's still working through event logistics and everything, but because it's the second annual event, it still requires council approval. So that's why the application is before you.
Just an informational question, what why does it need a event permit? All events in Ridgeway have a permit so we know what's going on or?
Yeah, that's a great question. Actually, Pam can probably give some, some background as to what the policy has been in the past, but I believe fundamentally it's, if it's a recurring event, it requires council approval for the first two years. Is that right, Pam?
And then it can be administratively. So anytime there's a, an event that is on a town, that is on a town property, like a park or on the right of way or street or sidewalk, those have to come to council, but when they're in a park, it's only two days, I mean, two years, but when it's on a right of way, it always comes to council.
Thank you.
I'll just say that having attended the last one of these events that the youth council put on pickleball tournament, the pickleball club has a youth subcommittee shows up and helps teach the kids. There's a bunch of kids that showed up. Never played pickleball before. A bunch of adults showed up, never played pickleball before. So I would encourage council and anybody listening to show up and support this fundraiser and never play pickleball. There'll be all kinds of free instruction, lots of fun.
Did you play?
Oh, yeah.
Terry's an avid pickleballer.
Oh.
I have holes in my head.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Anybody in the audience, again, either there in the room or on Zoom, have any questions about this item? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the special event permit from the Youth Advisory Council for the pickleball tournament at the Ridgeway Athletic Park on May thirty-first.
I'll second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Another roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Grambling.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Montague.
Aye.
Skylar.
Aye.
Scoville.
Aye.
All right. Passes unanimously. Let them know, Preston. Okay, so this takes us to the formal appointment of Mayor Pro Tem and review of council representation on commissions, committees, boards and organizations. We do this every first meeting in April when we typically have either new members on council or re-elected members. So we'll start out with the formal Mayor Pro Tem for the rest of this year. I'll open up the Florida nominations.
Really like being on our sorry. Like, I don't want to do that. I don't feel like I know enough.
I expect that.
But I couldn't hear what he said.
Beth.
It was a short.
Look at the T L D R.
I'm sorry, Polly, did you second it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second, Josie and I couldn't hear the motion.
There was a motion to nominate Beth by Terry and seconded by Polly.
For Mayor Pro Temp.
Excuse me. Nominate Beth as Mayor Pro Temp. That was made by Terry and seconded by Polly.
All right, are there any other nominations? What's that?
Nolly, you can't put her under your breath for poor John online.
She's talking about her position on a different committee. Aggressively, no, thank you.
Since there's only been one nomination, I think we can all agree to appoint Beth as Mayor Pro Temp by acclamation. Is there, is there any disagreement with that? Hearing none, Beth is the new Mayor Pro Temp. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
That takes. Sorry.
I have a question about that. This is good. Both here. So say John was not at the meeting and Beth was running the meeting as Mayor Pro Temp. Does she still have her vote?
Yes.
Yes.
There we go.
Good question, though. All right, so. Going down the list. Russ Meyer, outgoing councillor and Mayor Pro Temp was on, was the ex officio member on planning commission with me. I know that Michelle would love to stay on the planning commission. So unless anybody disagrees with that, I think we can. Appoint her as the, the ex officio member on planning commission.
I support that.
Great.
And, you know, I, I don't know that there's, there's been some discussion whether. She could remain as chair as the ex officio member. I don't know if that's a problem or not. I don't know if Bo has an opinion. I also don't know if maybe the best way to approach it, which is the way we have in the past when there's new members on planning commission is just. Elect the chair amongst ourselves at the first meeting where new members are seated, so.
Yeah, I don't have the, I'm not prepared to answer that this evening, Mayor, I apologize. But we'll take a look at the planning commission regulations to see if Michelle could serve as the ex officio member and as the chair. As I recall, you did that at one point in time, didn't you, Mayor?
I think I did, probably about, probably about fifteen years ago, but yeah, I believe I did. So at this point. Michelle, you are the ex officio member on planning commission from council. Whether or not you'll remain as chair is yet to be seen, it sounds like. If that's okay.
Thank you.
Since we're mentioning planning commission, Preston, will we be making sure to advertise that vacancy?
It's already done.
Okay.
It's already being advertised or has been advertised.
Can we throw that on social? I haven't seen it. Just making sure we're soliciting. We did, okay, sorry, maybe I've just been on a hole or.
We can, we can reissue it everywhere, but yeah, they're due at the end of the month, I think.
Okay.
Beth, you have been, you've been in a Mexican hole, I think.
Yes, I was.
Uh, thank you.
All good. Okay, so next up. Well, let's just put it this way, we've got, just looking down the list. The things that Russ did other than planning commission, he was the. He was the. Primary rep on the Water Users Association and Beth was the alternate. Is anybody interested in that?
I would actually love to. Take that on unless you wanted that, Michelle. Would you like to be my alternate? Sure.
Okay, so we'll make Beth the primary Water Users Association member and Michelle the alternate. And then. Russ was also on the Water and Land Committee for the Uncompagated Valley. I don't know that that group met very often, Preston.
Yeah, they, they did at one point and now, I mean, we'll check on it, but I think they. I'm not sure how often they meet at this point, but we can check into that.
Okay.
It looks like he was also the Ura County Joint Planning Board.
Oh, right. That's a good, good catch. Is anyone interested in? That position?
I will do either, both of those positions if no one else would rather, if no one else wants it.
Joint Planning Board seems like a good fit with the Ura County member up here.
Yeah.
I guess Russ was doing that too, so I think there was.
I think it's a good fit to have Michelle in that position.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right.
What's the other one that you didn't know if it meets? Do we need someone on there?
The Water, Ura County Water, oh, no, Water and Land Committee for the Uncompagated Valley.
Water and Land Committee for the Uncompagated Valley, that's administered through Tri County Water. We can check to see if, on the alternate, I'd be happy to just be the primary representative if it is not defined, probably not the right word, but.
One way to approach that, because Preston, I don't need you taking on something that doesn't mean a lot. But if it was a one-off that showed up, then that might be appropriate. But if you found that suddenly it kicked into gear. We could certainly revisit appointing a council member for that.
I'd be willing to do it.
Great.
Okay. Go ahead.
And then I'll get some type of notification if there's a meeting.
Yeah.
The same thing, same thing for the joint planning board. If the joint planning board just had a meeting on an issue, but they meet. Like once or twice a year at most at this point.
That today, so I've got like a couple of years before I have to go.
You never know when things might not, might start firing up again, who knows, but.
I'm good with that.
Sounds like everyone else is kind of settled in their position. Anybody have a need or desire to switch something up?
We are going to keep Polly on parks because she'll cry otherwise.
Well, I've tried that three times now.
Yeah, I think everybody else has really taken on some great leadership on their board appointments. So unless somebody wanted to switch things up, I feel good with them. Unless Preston, some things that you're fully in charge of. You don't feel like you should be.
Do you need anything off your plate?
I think we're good. I think we're good with the list we got.
Let us know some changes so we can support you.
Let me know when you're done doing the parts and I'll take your spot.
All right, it sounds like we're good on that, on this item then, is that right?
I think so. Bo, do you think we should ratify? Yeah, I think if we could just get a, a motion to ratify the appointments. And have Beth, what we did Beth as the Mayor Pro Temp by acclamation.
Pam, can you read us back what you have down and then that might be the easiest way to make the motion?
So the changes are to the planning commission, it's now councillor Montague. To the Joint Planning Committee or the Ura County Joint Planning Board is now councillor Montague. To the Ura County Water Users Association is now councillor Lathan and alternate is councillor Montague. And the Water and Land Committee for the Uncompagated Valley is now councillor Montague.
The move to approve the changes to our committee and commissions and board appointments for the town council in Ridgeway.
Excellent.
All right, motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilors Grambling.
Hi.
Kroger.
Hi.
Macon.
Hi.
Montague.
Hi.
Skyler.
Hi.
Scoville.
Hi.
All right, thanks, everybody. That was great. That takes us to written and verbal reports. We've got the twenty twenty five first quarter update on Ridgeway Wetterhorn. Wetterhorn deed restriction, key restricted community. Jim, are you back with us?
No, Mayor, Jim's not here. This is just a written report for information. If y'all have any questions that I can't answer. Or that we can't answer here, I can relay that to Jim and get some follow up, but this was a request. Like a formal request by you all at the last. Well, I shouldn't say last, but earlier in the year at one of the Workforce and Affordable Housing Committee meetings. And Jim was simply trying to meet the mark in providing this first quarter update. Again, if you have any questions, we'll throw them at us to answer or get it from Jim.
I think this is super helpful, maybe as we move towards our housing services administrator, they can do a little less important. But when we get questions like, are they all occupied? Are there spaces available? Was it worth it? It's really nice to be able to point to that.
Agreed.
Any questions in the room or on Zoom on this item?
Nope.
All right, hearing done, move to the town manager's report, I guess. Take it away, Preston.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Actually, before I start, I'll turn it over to Bo to give a brief update on our meeting with. Representatives from the Range History Museum, Ray Road History Museum and their attorney, Mr. Robert Thomas. Yeah, thank you, Preston. So as Preston noted, the participants. And him and I also joined as representatives of the town and had a discussion yesterday about some of the access issues. That were brought to the council's attention at the March council meeting. I would say this is probably one of the more productive meetings that we've had with the group. Unfortunately, there's not any solution that has presented itself as of yet. But the parties seem more engaged to try to find something. With that, it sounds like the Railroad Museum will be submitting a development application. For Angie's office to review and with that, there will be a pre-application. We'll have a better understanding of what the site development will look like. And what that will trigger under the town code for access and or other code provisions.
Awesome.
That's great news.
Yeah, that is good news. I did, Preston questioned. We got. An email from a concerned citizen of probably three weeks, maybe even a month ago. That person seemed to be under the impression that the reason that the Railroad Museum wasn't applying for a site permit is because they'd. Be under some penalty if they didn't proceed in a timely manner. And did you ever respond to that woman? Because I. Do you remember that, what I'm talking about?
That doesn't ring a bell. I can check, check email.
I, I know what you're talking about too, John, and I think it was not clear in the article in the paper that came out the week following our last board meeting. I read it and I, I meant to forward it to Preston to ask if we needed to clarify, have the paper clarify that. The way it was written, it made it sound like the two pieces were connected. When I feel like Bo very specifically said in our last meeting that the two, like the easement for the path. And then the access for the lot were two separate issues in the, the paper, the article in the paper, if I'm not correctly made, it sounded connected.
Yeah, and I apologize, Preston, I'm, I'm still have the email in my inbox, Carolyn Beardshear. And she only copied the council. I forwarded it to Bo, but I neglected to include you on that forward, so I'll, I'll forward it to you now. Just so you can be aware, it's, it's not critical, but I did, just want to make sure that people weren't under mistaken impression about these things.
Yeah, once I, once I see it, I'll. I might send a response to, what'd you say her name was?
Carolyn Beardshear.
I'll, I'll put together a response.
Birdshire or something like that. Okay, thank you. And, and again, really good to hear that things are going a little smoother and I'm, I think it'll really help to have a, a site development. Review process, start, start the. Kind of the ball rolling on, on getting something more formal in place. So that's good news. Anything in the, in your town manager's report you want to highlight for us?
Yes, sir. So, yeah, thanks both for that. Appreciate it. The microgrid project at, at Space to Create. The accompanying resilience hub. Is now in place. There's a few other pieces that we're hoping to get in place in the coming month or so by way of. Some charging stations and some other elements to enhance the resilience of peace, but I mean, that's a huge. That's a huge deal, especially given what we've been talking about during the meeting and a lot of shout outs to some partner organizations. Samago Power Association, Alternative Power Enterprises, the Department of Local Affairs. Terry, who else? Yeah, just a lot of, a lot of partners, so it's a huge, huge accomplishment to get that done. Annual street improvement operations actually start not May sixth, but April thirtieth. We finalized the street creating schedule today, had to make some modifications, the schedule actually be. Sent out starting tomorrow. I jumped the gun, it's going to be May sixth, it was still part of the draft, but it'll run from April thirtieth to May sixteen. So make sure to move your cars when you're supposed to, please. We have a new webpage on the town's website for the Beaver Creek Diversion Restoration Project. Check it out. It gives a kind of a timeline of where we started and where we're at now. Speaking of where we're at now, the RFP for the Construction Manager at Risk for that project has been issued. Proposals are due April seventeenth. Couple more RFPs are out there. Never seen that many RFPs on the town's website at once. Angie talked about, Angie talked about it earlier, the housing needs assessment, those proposals will do Friday, April eighteenth. And then we have one for architectural engineering design for. The baseball fields and pickleball courts at the Athletic Park. Those proposals are due Friday, April eighteenth as well. The last RFP, which is being. Spearheaded largely by the county, but the, the town and city are partners. Went out, went out, I don't know, about a month ago, proposals were due last week at some point. I met with Michelle with the city and Kara and Vicki with the county earlier in the week and the decision was made to reissue the RFP. Number of variables to that decision. The initial RFP was issued without input from the town or the city a month ago, which goes against what we had in the I G A. And, you know, in my opinion, the RFP was lacking in some specificity and clarity. And so, again, the decision was to reissue, we're going to work on bolstering that RFP. And hope to have it issued in the next couple of weeks, so. If you have any questions on that, happy to answer that, but that's where we're at, the Housing Administrator RFP. We have a couple of new hires that have already started with the town. The first is Justin Westbrook. He is in the part-time deputy, deputy role with the Ridgeway Marshals Office. His first day was Monday. And he's already starting field training with, with the crew, so. Welcome, Justin. Make sure you say hi to him if you see him around town.
Is that a replacement or an addition?
That's an addition. And then we have Mark Whiteman as a seasonal part-time parks employee. He will spearhead the maintenance of the landscape areas in our street escape project area. They may have seen him around town already. Cleaning up and stuff, but we're excited to have him. Great guy. Make sure you say hi to him. Thank you for his work too, but it's, it's pretty cool to be having so much staff if you're heading that. For this year, instead of contracting it out, we'll see how it goes, but hoping to save some money and. Get Ridgeway where it should be. The last couple of things I'll mention are the annual cleanup day event, April twenty sixth, that's a Saturday. And the lot behind the library, same as it ever was. Bring your trash, we'll be there to, to take it, bring your metal, we'll, we'll have it designated for that. Ura County Public Health will have a booth and a disposal bin for e-cigarettes and vapes. And Alpine Bank will hold their electronics recycling event in conjunction with the towns. I think across the parking lot somehow, that's how they've done it before. So a lot going on on that Saturday. Probably about time to set the next adopt a highway cleanup. Terry's grown in probably, but I'm excited. I am happy to send out a doodle poll if everyone would like to go that route. Some people aren't on, well, I guess it's not that hard to pull out the numbers, but I'm happy to send a doodle, doodle poll.
I think doodle polls works the most.
The sooner you do that, the better. The spring calendar is rapidly.
Well, we recognize that everyone's busy and so, Beth, you never miss one, have you?
No, I haven't, Terry.
I was up, I like couldn't.
I think that's two things. Love Your Valley Festival, Saturday, May seventeenth here at Harbor Park. Thank you, man. And then a lot of you may be housing open house. Last week or two weeks ago, about, two weeks ago, shout out to Angie for putting.
It was a great turnout.
Oh, I'm I'm stoked about the. Well, I gotta find the thing. Collaboration of calendar. That's going on, thank you so much, Tara, I'm hoping that maybe Erin, you and Ethel Fingula can get on. Those calendars, because we're we're working on combining all of the variety of community calendars around.
Oh, if people want to send us that, we're happy to take a look.
Definitely, calendar@uradee.com.
Done it.
Thank you, yeah, I'm very excited, so thank you, thank you, thank you to Tara. And every other.
That's a big deal, Sherman has been trying to coordinate that for years, so. Very cool.
It's in the pockets in here.
Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Preston on anything on his report? And yeah, Preston, give us some dates for the next adopt the highway thing, should get that done here pretty quick.
Will do.
Maybe in May. Anything else?
Boy, this was really easy, are they out meetings always like this?
No.
That's how they suck you in, Michelle.
The joke?
Good work, everybody.
I I thought it was pretty good.
Preston's joke?
I thought Terry's joke.
Oh.
At the end there.
Wait, will you read it?
Yeah.
No, maybe I'm.
The dolly llama. The dolly llama walks into a pizza joint and asks. Can you make me one with everything?
Oh, God.
My only complaint is, we've heard that before, we've heard that. I've heard that a ton.
Not one here, I've never heard that.
Let me look again. Well, you know what, I have the older version of the packet, I'm sorry.
I don't think it's packaged, actually.
Michelle, you're encouraged to submit jokes anytime you want.
Only if they're funny.
No, but the later in the meeting runs, the more. I'm not that good with jokes, I usually jump right to the punchline and then it's not fun.
Alright, well, I think, sounds like we're done, huh? Oh, committee reports, right, go ahead, Terry.
Yeah, well, now we have a quarter. So as you can see, the SAB has got, getting things, thanks to Preston's helping to herd our cats. Getting things done, so just as a reminder, what you saw tonight was our first of our quarterly reports. That will be rotating a member of the SAB through each quarter to give that report and also and mention things that are actionable, that the town council will consider, like. Consideration for going all documents, et cetera, et cetera. In the upcoming budget cycle, some of the. Twelve or whatever items they have will result in some potential budget requests from the cycle, things like funding. Food for events and small things like that, and possibly some money for the website, maintenance, things of that nature. And then lastly, I can't remember if you sent to everybody or not, the Mountain Town twenty thirty of which were a member. Now prominently features Ridgway in multiple places on that website, including a little write-up about Ridgway Sustainability, so I encourage you to go to the. Mountain twenty, Mountain Town twenty thirty website, check out our presentation, we have the mountain. Actually, all over the world, there's some from Japan and other places, but mostly in the West. And we, the upcoming, next summit is going to be in October, I think we have three repasses, repasses that we got with our membership. So the SAB will probably be discussing who amongst that committee will go, and then we can offer other slots for council members to be on the town. That's it.
Anybody else have committee reports? And thanks for that, Terry. I'm hearing silence.
The planning commission is reviewing the master plan with Angie's guidance. She's leading us through it. Preparing for an update next year.
Oh, really?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, sounds like we're done then, huh?
As I.
Alright, thanks, everybody. See you in a couple of weeks.
See you soon.
Adios.